At, actually that looks like six thirty-one, what's opening the November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting on the Town and Rutland Planning Board. First agenda item is minutes. Act Two.
I can make a motion that up to, where did I put it down? I think it was seven thirty when I left. I can move them up to there. Can somebody else move it further?
Let's stop laughing. I'll be crying before the end of the day.
And Tameka sent you an email today. I apologize, I need one more box of handi-.
They will send her all out and they won't send this anymore ever.
You had me going for about two seconds.
No, I'll order tomorrow.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, that should be the last one I need.
I know that Dolce has been having a problem getting them in there too.
What's that?
File folding.
Really?
Yeah. Had to come by. Okay, do we have a motion to accept the minutes?
Uh, yeah, I don't see anything wrong with that. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes past seven thirty.
Seven forty-one.
Seven fifty-three or something. Yeah.
You have a second, I'll take a second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
There none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is, the loss of the seat of Kevin Jarvey's resignation from the board, which, um, don't we have something in there?
Well, and Dick, I wanna, I wanna address your comment before the meeting started. It was explained last night at the select board meeting because Tim brought up that same issue. Um, when Kevin Jarvey sent an email, um, with his resignation, um, Anita tried to get him to come in and sign it, but at a certain point after several days of him not coming into town hall to sign it, an email is considered an official record, so she accepted the email as his resignation because she tried to get him to come in and sign. Is that correct, Tameka?
That's correct.
And he didn't respond to her emails, he didn't come in to sign it, so as to not hold the process up any longer legally, she could accept that email as, as his resignation. So that's what happened. She tried to get him to sign, he, he wasn't being responsive, so that's, that's what ended up happening with that.
I heard somebody else got into his, you know, broke into his computer and sent it. All right, if that's the way you wanna be about it, I'll, I'll, I'll accept it.
Also, uh, we hit it down here, a vote to accept resignation from the bylaw subcommittee. Do we need to vote that?
Yes, so you don't need to vote for the planning board because it's an elected position, but because he's appointed, the planning board needs to accept the resignation so that the seat is officially vacant.
Can we do that tonight though, since it was not on the agenda?
No, it is on the agenda.
Oh, no, I thought you said Tim Gibb.
I'm sorry, this is for Kevin's.
Kevin Jarvey, okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
So, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Kevin Jarvey from the bylaw subcommittee?
Sure, I'm gonna make a motion to accept Kevin's resignation from the bylaw subcommittee as well.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion?
Question. Did he submit his resignation for that as well?
No, but he's automatically appointed to it because he's a planning board member, so in this case.
Okay, I, I thought that, I just wanted to make sure you didn't.
Yeah, it's kinda like one in the same.
He could still be appointed as a member of lodge.
Right.
But, but.
But not as a delegate of the planning board.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next one's gonna be a little bit on the tough side. Uh, introduce new planning board member, uh, Britton Bradford.
Welcome, Mike.
That's been tried many, many times.
If you could just.
Ain't happening now.
Just stand in for the night. I'll be a ghost. I gather he is still on his way from the.
Yeah, and I mean, we did discuss internally, um, Austin, you know, said that the state would allow him to be sworn in remotely, however you and I spoke on the phone, and ideally if he's gonna be driving home, um, is, is he logged in?
Uh, yes, I am.
Oh, Brittany, here, I apologize. I didn't notice that.
I apologize, I should've announced a little bit sooner, I do have you, um, on voice but not on video as I am driving at the time.
Awesome.
Okay, okay, so I, I'm assuming you have not been sworn in then?
I have not, sir.
Okay, okay, yes. Well, uh, I don't know, I'm just gonna say, you know, welcome aboard and, uh, hopefully we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, yes.
If you want, I'll swear.
I'm trying to make this one, it really was, but, um, it wasn't in the cards for tonight, and I apologize, but, uh, I'm excited to get started, excited to, uh, sit down with everyone and get going.
So Britton, I will get you a new copy of the zoning bylaws, it just got updated with, uh, changes from the past two to three years, so I'll make sure you get that, and the next meeting's on December twelfth.
Excellent, sounds good.
Okay, very good.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, item four, development rate limitation bylaw, discussion with Michael Sullivan.
Good evening.
Step up, step up.
I was kinda here for a reason. Keep an eye on the daughter's car. Um, I think, I think most of you probably know, uh, when Harmony Hills started applying for building permits, a, uh, snafu in the existing, uh, zoning, uh, became apparent that, um, in my opinion, needs to be changed, so I'm here to ask you folks to go through the procedures of, um, zoning change, which you know what that is, public hearings and all of those kinds of things, so if you, do they have copies of this, Tameka?
Yes, the original package, yep.
So if you look at the existing bylaw and you look on the bottom of the page where it says section ninety-five, the following shall be exempt. Everybody with me?
Yep.
And one of the items that says it's units exempted under CE and G below, and E is the, is the item that causes the problem. Um, if you read, then flip the page, E says, any proposed development that would result in new dwelling units located within the zoning district known as the Heights Plan Development District, those will be counted towards the quota, and we don't want that obviously, and it's very apparent that the intent was for it not to be there, because if you now look at item B, dwellings, units that are age restricted to residents older than fifty-five and older, so, I mean, one says one thing and one says the other. So I guess what I'm, and so John and I got together and John was kind enough to rewrite this, and it basically just eliminates E, moves the letters around.
I was gonna say, that's all we need.
That's all we gotta do is.
And it just removes the reference at the heading of that section two, it removes let, uh, that item E.
Does that have to go through another town meeting?
Yeah, you, you have to have public hearings, you have to approve it, and then it has to go to town meeting, in which case I wouldn't, I'm making the presentation, you know, to.
I'd like to find out where it came from.
So, Dick, the timing of that would be, luckily, there's gonna be a special town meeting in February.
That's right.
And we have two zoning bylaw amendments that weren't able to go forward at the last town meeting, that can go forward at this one, so this'll just be a third, and if the board agrees to go forward with this, I could submit it with the other two bylaws to the select board here at their meeting in December for a public hearing in early January for a special town meeting in February.
Early February?
February fifteenth.
Okay, fifteenth.
Yep.
Too late.
You could've come earlier, so.
No way. So, um, just to add to that, in the decision that was written, that was signed, you know, by the HBDD review board, and in the description of the hearing for that, this, uh, for the, for the, um, HBDD site, you know, for Harmony Hill, the last parent, the last sentence of the, of the, uh, posted hearing specifically says, to allow an age fifty-five and older multi-housing, uh, development at the HBDD site. So it's, I mean, obviously, that was the intent the whole, the whole way. Um, so, like I said, that's what I'm asking you folks to do. I'd like to do it as soon as possible, because when you think about it, you know, February sounds a long way away, but with the holidays and all the other things, uh, you know, the advance notice that Tameka has to do for postings and, and notifications and all that, um, and you know, there's two other points in the decision that the senior housing is specifically, uh, mentioned as well. So, I guess if nobody has any questions, I guess someone has a question.
Yeah, I got a couple too, so.
No, please, the board should always go first.
Um, it does say at the bottom in ninety-six that you can make special accommodations, is that how that is worded in this?
Yeah, that doesn't count for this though, because I did consult with town council on this, and unfortunately, um, B and E kind of contradict each other. Yeah, so, when, you know, yeah, I don't think that, that, I don't think that means to these, to these items here. Can make, the, the, um, the RDIC, obviously, with any project that comes forward in that district, has the right to be flexible on certain things or waive certain things, but when it comes to the nuts and bolts of these items, I don't, I don't believe that.
You can use that to.
Yeah.
What if, what if we just eliminate E?
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
That's what's all you're doing.
Yep. Eliminate E and change the other letters.
Now, would there be, um, so, you know, one says, you know, you can, obviously, B says you can do fifty-five and older there on that site, um, proposed development, we live at new dwelling units, it doesn't mention fifty-five and older, but would we wanna just take B and put it on E instead of getting rid of the idea?
No, they, they contradict each other, that's the problem, is, one says dwelling units that are age restricted, age restricted and older are exempt, but then E says, um, any.
Any structures.
Any, any residential structures in the Heights Plan Development District are not exempt, so, so it's, it's just cleaner to get, to take E out of there.
Easy as plain.
And the zoning in the HBDD site, as I remember it, um, no dwelling, no residential units can be built.
That's correct.
You know, and single-family houses can be built there, so if, if that's what you were worried about.
You saying apartments or something, is that the other way of?
I don't remember if it says single family or not, but.
Okay. You know, that, yeah, I just wasn't sure if one is to protect certain style housing versus another or something like that.
Good question, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, we can look at that and, and fix it so these guys can go forward, I guess.
Well, they're, they're going forward, and it, it doesn't appear as though it's gonna affect them.
Yeah.
Uh, because of the season and the number of building permits they already have under the quota.
The soggy ground is.
Soggy ground is, uh, well, that's, that's another whole discussion, but I, I can update you on that too if you want, but why don't we finish this and?
Peter, you have a question?
So Peter Crane Nate's way, a couple of points, number one, February is, as much as people have said, it is not locked in stone yet, and I know you're looking at me weird, but think about the pace of bylaw review by the select board, which is the biggest thing holding it up, we can't send anything off to legal review till the select board's done, so, I'm just saying, February was mentioned, and I'm not saying it won't happen, I'm saying it's not locked down.
I, I are more advised that if we don't have it in that February date, it's unlikely we're gonna have it at all, based on looking at the other date.
Oh, oh, I don't disagree with that either.
Right.
I, I, oh, I.
But.
I recognize that.
From a procedural standpoint, we, I would recommend we go forward with this, and if, if the special town meeting doesn't happen.
Oh, yeah.
Then it doesn't matter, and we get it ready, and we bring it back in May, but if we don't go through this process of submitting to the select board and getting a public hearing in January, then if the meeting does happen in February, then where?
Because you can't even, excuse me. You can't even schedule a public hearing now until January, right?
No, no, because we only have one meeting in, in December, and that's on the twelfth.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so, you know, if, if it's, if you're gonna have a public hearing in January.
We need to get going now.
And, and I completely agree that, my warning notwithstanding, you should move with all due haste on this.
That's fine.
Um, yeah.
I just, I wanna be ready, I wanna be in position, whatever the time is, because I don't want them to be sitting there in the spring, hopefully not able to get building permits, because if you remember, there are penalty clauses to them if they don't build a certain number of units, which is gonna, it's gonna be a penalty to town if we have to deviate from that.
Can a citizen's petition?
What's that?
Can a citizen's petition request a special town meeting?
Sure can, yep.
That's not too high, is that the ten signatures needed?
It's a hundred.
It's a hundred for special, ten for any.
Uh, for something like this, I would rather go through the planning board and go and have, and have the select board refer it back to us, yeah.
It's not gonna happen any faster anyway.
Yeah, no, it's not.
And it's gonna cost.
The meeting, the meeting could be held even if we don't have the bylaws ready.
Oh, you mean like to call a special town meeting?
Just, just have.
The three zonings is one possibility. Just having the three zonings.
Yep. Not having the bylaws.
I thought you meant getting signatures to call a special town meeting.
No, no.
Yeah, so.
Just hold that, I'll need to tell me.
So there's, there's no harm in going forward and going through the process, and if it doesn't happen in February, it doesn't happen for me, I mean, obviously, we have no control over that.
The other point was, uh, it is my opinion that this does change the intent of the growth limitation rate bylaw, and I'm saying it's wrong, I'm just saying that I believe that the committee that formed this bylaw did it with the intent without the recognition, this is pre-Harmony Place, so their concern was not to put lots of residential lots in the Heights. I would ask you to consider, instead of completely eliminating E, to amend E to, to, shall only up, shall not apply to resident, to, to age restricted residential lots on the Heights, something like that. So in other words, so we, we, you take the, the, you leave the core intent, you're not gonna, nobody's gonna build a whole bunch of residential units all at once, with the possible exception of age restricted units, which I think meets that, 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 that nexus of the original intent of the bylaw with the reality of the current situation, which I agree needs to be addressed. Just, just, I just ask for your consideration.
So you're saying that they, that you think they specifically wanted to limit the amount of growth on the HBDD site?
For residential.
Residential.
For residential.
Non-age restricted residential.
Yes. Well, I believe that that was the intent, one of the intents of that committee. Think about who was on it.
I know, it just doesn't ring any bells.
It contradicts the, the other part of the growth restriction bylaw that says you can do, that fifty-fives and older are exempt.
And I think that if we were to go through the minutes of that committee, we would discover that they were run by fear of somebody doing it, and without, with no knowledge of what was going to happen in the future, and without consideration for anything that could happen, they just went with the, we don't want lots of buildings up there, but lots of houses up there.
The HBDD zoning itself says that over fifty-five is allowable, so.
Right, so I guess what he's saying is he wants to keep some stipulation in there that it's, it's not appropriate to have single-family homes in there or apartment-style, non-age restricted on that property.
I don't have that zoning in front of me, but I'm almost positive, in the HBDD zoning, it specifically eliminates single-family homes. Almost positive. You know, it's, whatever, twenty years ago.
But go over the laws, you guys know what you're doing there.
You know what, you know what, my goal is here, and I, and I wanna do this, this is about as simple as it can be, if we can do it this way, and.
And ultimately, the, the RDIC has, has control over what goes on in that property.
That's correct.
So if the intention is not to have either single-family homes or apartment-style, non-age restricted homes, the IDIC can easily.
But RDICs change over time, that's to say the committee makeup changes over time, which means that the desire of one particular instance, we've seen this, I'm just gonna pick on the select board, where one select board is philosophically very different from a different iteration of the select board.
And, you know, back then also, I think there was probably a greater hope that there was gonna be significant commercial development.
Right.
And that just hasn't happened.
Well.
You know.
Not yet.
Yeah, well, with this coming in, it might be, you know.
So do you want me to draft up something tomorrow, tweaking this to?
I'd like to, give me a chance to go back and look at the, the original HBDD bylaw.
Yeah, we have to, we have to do this quickly, because again, I have to have, if, if, if this is gonna go.
I'll come to you tomorrow.
Yeah, if this is gonna be on the select board to, for, for all on the eleven.
I appreciate your comments, Peter, but to some extent, the, the growth committee, whatever they were called.
I am no fan of this bylaw.
No, no, I understand. All I'm trying to say is, if, if they, if they determined, if they put it in there on purpose, because they didn't wanna see growth up there, well, no use as far as I'm concerned, because that's not the intent.
Right.
That was not the intent of the master plan that was written, it wasn't the intent of the decision that was written, and it's not the intent of the zoning that was written. So, I mean, however many people.
But it is the intent as voted at town meeting.
Yeah, that's it right there.
And that's, and that to me is more important.
Well, at the moment, it is.
That's why we can amend.
But it's, but it specifically contradicts the other part of the regulation.
So let's, let's work on that, if we can get some, something that tweaks it without removing it and keeps that in place, because I understand the concern.
I don't know, I, I still say just remove it.
Just remove it?
You know, to, to me, why, why would the growth, why would anybody, but why would the growth committee agree to allow fifty-five units to be built by the general public, but then not to be able to be built on the town-owned property? That makes no sense at all.
I.
No, I, no, I'm not asking you to, I'm, I'm just, it's a rhetorical statement.
If we were lucky, if we even had, you know, enough people there at the meeting, number one. Number two, it seems to me that near the very end, it was the select board that was pulling it out of our hands and taking it to their, their jurisdiction, you might say.
Yeah, they had no jurisdiction right of the zoning.
Well, you weren't there. Jeff Skilling was on the board at the time, and, uh, I was very happy with him, but he was not very happy.
Okay.
Anyway.
Peter isn't a pleasure to debate.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
I will accept a motion to instruct John to construct a war article to delete from the development rate limitation bylaw, section ninety-five, section E, and also the reference in the beginning of section ninety-five to remove the letter E.
Second that.
I guess I will be okay with it as long as there's provisions that say, that protect the area too from this mismanagement of housing growth, you know, if you can confirm with him.
The zoning.
That, you know, because it's a special piece of property, you know, if someone comes in and goes, well, hey, that's not there anymore, you know, I'm willing to buy, and I'm not saying we wouldn't be willing to sell, but essentially, something that's protects the town.
And if you look at the website and, in prep, in prepping for the interview before I came here, I noticed the marketing that was done for the property, it was specifically, specifically for mixed use, not single-family residences, mixed use.
It specifically says, no single family.
Exactly.
That's my memory, I, I, and I'm, yeah, I'm, I have a pretty good general recollection of facts, I would almost guarantee.
So, so we will take a look at that and confirm all that.
Just keep the safety.
Okay, yep.
So what, what is your concern? I, I kinda missed what you meant. Because I wanna make sure we don't get to town meeting and look like a, you know.
Can't you be forced to put, say the state comes in and says like, oh, you got property, you're putting seven-story housing over there.
Why is only one of that?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think.
Does this open a window?
Because what the, what the state did with their, for instance, their MBTA housing, their MBTA community guidelines for multifamily housing, what they directed various towns to do, depending on your designation, whether you're a commuter rail community and adjacent community, is they would basically say, you need to establish an area that allows X, at least X amount of density with various stipulations with various allowances. Um, I don't, I don't foresee the state being able to come in and take a certain piece of property, say, no, you have to put housing there. I don't, I don't.
Because we are one town out beyond Holden.
Or, or for any other.
No, 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 but, but even, even then, Dick, they, they wouldn't say, you need to put it there, no, no, they, they don't say, you need to put it there, they're saying, you need to have an area of at least X amount of acres.
Yeah.
That allows different types of density, and again, it varies, Stoughton, when I was in Stoughton, they are a commuter rail community, so they were the highest density. We had to have the highest density for the downtown zoning we were doing. Come out to a community like Rutland, the, the, the size of the area and the density is much different.
It's scalable.
It's scaled, it's scaled depending on your location.
I think the only way that could happen here is if someone, you know, in our town is, is a forty-B development.
Right.
I mean, because other than that, you have to meet the zoning regulations.
Correct.
Right.
I was just thinking of Hubbardston, I don't know if you heard, Peter or not, that Hubbardston had a, a piece of property and the state turned around and told Hubbardston, since it's town-owned, you will take this out of conservation restriction and you will build low-income housing. And that's, to me, for granted, that was a shock.
To remove a CR or an APR is an act of the legislature.
A seventy-five percent vote of the legislature, so.
Totally, totally, it blew me away, so we're having, you know, discussions about that with the Ad Commission.
Okay, so.
Any more discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome, thank you. So we'll look at the bylaws tomorrow and just make sure that.
Okay, I'll, I'll come up and chat, are you in all day tomorrow?
Yeah, I'm in all day tomorrow, yeah. Excellent, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, folks. Lady and gentleman.
Item five, CMRPC delegates.
Yeah, so this is a discussion I want to have, I know Tim is not here tonight, obviously, and I know Dick and Tim are the delegates to CMRPC on behalf of the town. Um, in my previous roles in other communities as the town planner, I've usually been, um, chosen as one of the delegates to CMRPC because the towns have thought that there's, there's a benefit to having, um, the town planner as one, as one of the liaisons, as one of the delegates to.
Goodnight, Mike.
RPA. So, um, what I am asking is that if Tim or Dick, um, if, if it would be possible or one of them would be willing to allow me to be, um, it doesn't matter which, you know.
Yeah, I think it does matter which.
No, no, because regardless, as long as you're a delegate, you can attend the meetings and all that, I don't, I don't think primary or secondary or alternate really matters, but as long as you're a delegate, you get invited to their meetings and things like that and for updates, so I was just, I was just going to ask if one of them would be willing to cede their, um, delegate ship, um, to allow me to become one of the, uh, one of the delegates to CMRPC.
Give up my assistant.
See.
Treasurer, I don't, I can't.
My, my, my feeling is that it should not be Dick, uh, just, if nothing else, you've been with CMRPC for so long, you're so familiar with everything that goes on, with all the people there, and, you know, other than a couple of meetings, I don't think Tim is really done much of anything.
Been, I know he came to one, and, uh, I believe the last one he zoomed in on.
Yeah.
The quarterly meeting.
And somehow or other, I don't think he would mind.
Okay.
That, that's my personal feeling.
So should I have, should I contact him and ask him?
Why don't you contact him?
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
That's, that's my personal feeling, I don't know how you two feel about it, but.
Yeah, we all went to the meeting that one time, it's nice, yeah, probably be beneficial to even have both of you guys there.
Oh, absolutely.
You guys sign in, I mean, if, and if Tim, Tim's okay with that, then obviously, I think.
Yeah, because it, because obviously, there should be a planning board member, I know, um, in the towns I've been in, it's always been a planning board member who's been one of the delegates. Um, in Stone, the planning board chair was one of the delegates, and I was the alternate, so we would attend the meetings, and the nice thing is, if for some reason Dick can't And the nice thing is, if for some reason Dick can't make it, or I can't make it, the other person is usually there to get the information, so that's, that's another part of that reason.
Limited to two, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, they do. So, okay, I'll talk.
Let's put it this way. Thank you for that.
You gonna add, make them, move it to three people?
Goes by population, doesn't it?
I thought every community had two. Every community has two, but in my opinion, it would be nice maybe to up the alternate to two members.
Yeah. So awesome. So we'll look into that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, twenty twenty-three, or maybe twenty twenty-four.
It's probably gonna be twenty twenty-four at this point, but I'm in the process of, I mean, I, you know, early on, I got, I got a copy of the master plan with, with Dick's comments on it, and I'm in the process of compiling his comments into a document. I think I'm on page one hundred twenty-one. So I should, I should, I should be done with that here in the next couple of weeks, so that's the update I have on that.
Twenty.
And you mail it to them and they.
Well, no, 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 so what I will do is I will basically look at the, at the comments.
So you're up to there?
Yes. So if there, if there are comments that can be, I, I think there are a lot of comments that can be addressed by CMRPC. For instance, I remember one, at the beginning of the Economic Development section, the picture does not show a business, and I know your comment was, this picture should show a business, and I agree with you. It, it's, some of it's a matter of, okay, swap out this picture for this. There could be things that need to be, you know, a, a different reference needs to be made, things like that. So I think quite a few of the comments can be taken care of.
Yeah.
Simply. And so, once I get done with the comments, I will, I will compile them and we'll start addressing them.
Okay, yeah. And they just, they'll, you edit the file, or you have to get it back?
No, I would, I would, since they've been the ones working on it, unless they give me permission to edit the file, they would be the ones to edit the file. So I haven't had that conversation with Tim yet.
Yeah.
And I, you know, the thing is, I, I just don't know how willing they're gonna be to do more work on this.
Probably not, and probably Janet wasn't at the last meeting, I wanted to have a discussion with her about it, and I had this with me, and I'm not gonna be able to go tomorrow night, and I'm gonna be zooming in.
But, well, we just wait and see.
I, I do, I do wanna caution, caution you, Dick, because this is a document, that's a community-wide document.
That's correct.
And, and that, Dick, please let me finish. To reach out and have direct conversations with Janet, it's the executive director of CMRPC, I'm assuming?
Correct.
She's not really the one working, it's, it's other staff that have been working on this and done the public outreach, so I just wanna be careful of Janet, to you, got the. But, but I understand, Dick, but there's, there's a process here. And for an individual member to go and have a conversation directly with the executive director of CMRPC, I don't know if that's completely appropriate, because this is, this has gone through an exhaustive public process to get to this point, and, you know, having comments are one thing, but having a one-on-one conversation, it's, it's kinda like you're representing the entire, the planning board and the entire town, and I think we gotta be careful with that, because this is, you know, this, this is a town-wide document.
And I, you better be careful too, because I don't want Boston's ideas being brought into us.
No.
Slowly, but methodically.
And I agree, I agree with you.
That's the whole freaking damn thing, and I'm sick and tired of reading through this thing here, and they, the first thing is parks plural, we only have one park in this town. And then they have no idea, for crying out loud, what DCR owns in this town and everything else, I mean, they, they.
So, so let me, let me address that, because I've dealt with master plans before. And if I can be perfectly honest, a lot of that document is, for lack of a better term, fluff. A lot of that document is filler.
Correct.
The meat of that document are the implementation goals and objectives at the end of the document.
Yeah.
That's really, it's the overall vision and that, I think, I think Richard had expressed that when he was here. Those are the, those are basically the two areas that the planning board should be focusing on tweaking, is the vision and making sure those goals and objectives at the end, the implementation are in place. Everything else.
And that's why I'm a little uptight, because I thought the whole planning board was gonna meet separately and go over the stuff, because to me, for crying out loud, that is the most important part. And that's what was, Rich had brought up, the goals and objectives. I did go through that, and in my.
So I don't, I, I just, so Dick, I, I understand your frustration, because being at this for twenty-four years, I share your frustration. I've seen chapter forty B kind of be jammed down towns' throats. And I heard, I've heard comments before, and I don't disagree, I wasn't there when it happened, but I've heard, I've heard opinions that chapter forty B was legislation that was pushed through by lobbyists for the construction industry to bypass local zoning to develop housing.
Correct.
I don't necessarily disagree with that. I look at complete streets, I'm not a big fan of complete streets. You know, I live fairly close to Plain Ridge Casino, where that's supposed to child for bad complete streets, where when that casino went in there, they were made to put a painted bike path across, along Route One, across the entrance to the Route four ninety-five South on-ramp.
Yeah.
Is that where we really wanna encourage cycling? Is on Route One going across a highway ramp? So, Dick, I share your frustration, I understand, and one thing that's been frustrating is over the years, these unfunded mandates that come down from the state make it more and more difficult for towns to regulate their own land use. So MBTA Community Guidelines is most recent example, there were some scathing letters that were written to DHCD, including the town manager in Foxborough at the time, who basically argued that we've worked very hard to get above our ten percent. Now you're saying that's not enough, you need to keep more and more and more. At what point do we start to lose our suburban character in this town? So I hear you, Dick. I just don't wanna get so caught up in what's basic information that really is not consequential to the goals and objectives of the document. That's what I don't wanna get too caught up on. And so I wanna focus on the goals and objectives, because that's really the meat of this document. What does this, how, how does this town wanna accomplish where it wants to be? And that's, that's in the end of the document, so. And I wanna make sure that this process is, is not going off, going off too unwieldy and going off on tangents. I wanna make sure it's, it's as focused as it can be.
There are so many untrue facts in here. And that's one of the bigger things that I found going through this.
So I, I understand what you're saying, Dick, I really do, because I've been working on the ground as these changes have been made. And one thing that I, I can't reconcile is, I understand certain things where, okay, they say that towns have to have an area for something that's related to housing. Okay, I get that, we've had a housing crisis. But how can you reconcile the fact that towns have to have an area for adult entertainment? Why does, how does that make any sense? What is that, how does that benefit the town?
We have a place.
We have one.
Right, so, but, see, so I agree with you, the state's all over the place, but a lot, a lot of the format of these master plans is pretty boilerplate. You have to have, all, all master plans have to have the same elements, obviously, with transportation, economic development and things like that. And a lot of it's background information, a lot of it's very general. So I just wanna stay focused on the, on the implementation at the end and not, and not go too far off, because at the end of the day, is the town gonna accomplish between now and the next master plan update? Is it gonna accomplish all the goals and objectives? Probably not.
Well, I don't know.
No, it, it's, it's, it's basically what this is, is this is kind of a wishlust. And it's, it's, it, it gives someone like myself some guidance as far as where the town wants to go and what, because we may explore a certain zoning bylaw amendment and get a few months in and decide, well, maybe this isn't such a good idea. So this is not, this is not a Bible, this is a guide.
And Norm, how, how many surveys over the years have been taken? And one of the biggest things that used to come back, for crying out loud, why did you move the town? Was the open space was one of the biggest things. And how often did you see that referenced in here? Hardly at all. That's why.
Again, I'll look at the goals and objectives at the end, and it, and it says in there that if one of the goals is to, but again, it doesn't mean that the town is going to purchase every piece of open space that comes up, because towns can, just cannot afford that, it's not reasonable to expect. If, if, if a piece of land comes up and it's strategically located where it connects with other open space, or there's some benefit to the town to maintain that space as open space, then yes, it behooves the town to potentially purchase that property. But obviously, towns this size don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars just lying around to say, okay, well, we have a property on Ridge Road coming up way over near the town line. Does that make sense for the town to purchase? Maybe not, because it's fairly isolated.
Are you kidding me? You know what the heck, that piece of property? Has anybody said anything about it? I hope Peter, for crying out loud, is listening, because in my opinion, it is Zone A, it was on the Zone A map, for crying out loud. So how is he doing anything on that piece, on that part of the property? That one thing, there's a, there's a little stream that runs down through there, it's part of Zone A.
He can.
That's what I'm saying, what are you gonna do? You gotta freaking, you gotta stand on your toes, look around, what the hell is doing, and scream bloody murder every time you see something that's not right or has not been looked at properly? Trust me, for crying out loud, this mor, not this morning, yesterday morning, I talked to a individual in town here, and just say that person was not happy at all with our town council. Tamika, for crying out loud, you guys ought to be looking for a new town council, in my opinion.
Yeah, Tamika, you get right on that. Boy, if you had that much power.
Just to say, for crying out loud, I brought up, I said, why wasn't this done? And I said, this is, on this particular date, this is what happened. And this individual says, what? I never heard that. I said, you've gotta be kidding me. This whole zottling thing would have been, and the town would collect seventy-five thousand dollars from certain landowner. That I can't talk about. All right, moving on. Let's get out of here, hurry up.
Correspondence none.
Now, correspondence right now.
To Town Planner Report.
Yeah, so one thing that I've talked to Norm about this is one, one effort we've been doing here in, early on in my tenure is we're putting a full-court press on organizing the files in the office. We have Jean, senior, senior worker through the tax program with the Assessors Office. She's almost done going through our A and R files and alphabetizing them and organizing them and making sure that they're filed correctly. I've been tag-teaming with her, and I've been going through the site plan approval and special permit files, and found that the previous filing, basically, files were all grouped together and thrown in folders with no organization. So what I'm doing is I'm creating file folders for each individual address that got a special permit, site plan approval, so it's easier to find. Someone comes in and says, hey, I want, I want the special permit that was granted for eighty-eight Main Street. Bang, you can go in alphabetical order, Main Street, eighty-eight, and find it. Because from what I understand, when I started, that has been kind of a nuisance, is finding files, it's taken way too long to find files. And we should be able to put our hands on a file within about a minute. And that's my goal, is to have it organized like that. And Norm was nice enough, he stopped in yesterday, and, you know, we looking at these subdivisions that are all in three-ring binders, the next thing Jean's gonna do is she's gonna get them out of three-ring binders and put them in folders in drawers, so they're more secure and safe. And also, we're gonna, we're, we're able to, other than Asbilt plans, get rid of subdivision files that are old.
Three-ring binders, basically, according to the records retention.
One year.
They're useless.
Yeah, so we're really streamlining things and making things more organized to make things easier to find. And so it's, it's really exciting, I think it's, it's gonna feel a lot better. It's gonna make my job and Tamika's job a lot easier to find files quicker, which is the way it should be, and going forward, when I, you know, we're not gonna go back and redo all the files in the past, but my MO, when I finish with a project file, the next file that comes in, once that decision is issued and the twenty-day appeal period is up, I will go through and I will organize the file in chronological order from the beginning of the application to the end, and just keep adding documents on. So if someone, if someone says, hey, Tamika, do you have that decision for that project? She'll know exactly where to go in the file to get the decision. If someone wants, hey, I was wondering about the abuddhas list, that's gonna be right at the beginning. So, things like that, and the application's gonna be right at the beginning. So going forward, that's the way files are gonna be organized to make it easier to find, so. And once we do it, we only have to do it once. So that's the good thing, so that's been a major initiative. Yeah.
Wachusett two sixteen or two sixty-eight had a special permit for three lots on.
State lots?
State, uh, two of them were state lots, one was on, on Wachusett Street. But we allowed that first one to, on driveway, to join.
A common driveway.
A common driveway, I think it's, I, and I'm not sure.
Wachusett Street rings a bell, I don't know if I've seen two sixty-eight yet, because I still have a half a drawer left to go.
Anyways, I'll be coming up to talk to you about it, because I know they're working on this house that hasn't been in, and they never finished that road to attach to it.
Oh, yeah.
And I would like them to know that they have the right to attach to it. In case they can't get out of their driveway, they might be able to get out.
Yep. So again, it'll just, you know, if someone like Norm yourself comes in, for instance, Dick, and you say, hey, I wanna see two sixty-eight Wachusett Street, I'll be able to find it within about ten to fifteen seconds. Just open a drawer, there it is, everything's in alphabetical order, so it'll make things a lot easier.
All right.
Okay.
You mentioned throwing out documents, do you go digital before you, they get thrown out?
Not, not necessarily. Some towns have done that, they work, King Information Systems is a big company that does that.
They're just scanning them.
Yeah, they scan them, that's a, that's a very expensive, time-consuming process.
Thing is, in, in, in these subdivision folders, well, only half of the stuff that's in there, like the inspection reports. Well, you know, at this, at this point, five years after, after a road's been accepted.
Yep.
Do you, do you need those inspection reports from?
Right, and you also, you also, for instance, I had, I had three or four binders with just every single invoice going back years and years and years by the planning board, fifty-three G invoices and all this stuff. So I emailed the town accountant last week, and she said, if you wanna go back three years, that's fine, but she goes, we have all the originals, and the town clerk is the record keeper for the town. So when they file, when they file an application with us and any documents within that file, it's with the town clerk. And then various things, and then various things are, are recorded with the Registry of Deeds. For instance, all decisions are recorded with the Registry of Deeds, all approved plans and amendments to plans are recorded with the Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
So there's multiple layers.
The only problem with plans, because I'm thinking about it. You remember, we used to, when we got a subdivision plan, we signed like all sixteen, eighteen pages. We don't do that anymore. So all of the details sheets are not being submitted as, as built.
Right.
Ooh.
So roadway profiles and things like that.
Yeah, so we do need to be careful about that.
Things can change and you won't have an original document.
Well, then, Norm, we don't have to, we don't have to discard these subdivision files. I'm perfectly happy to put them in folders and, and keep them.
It's more, to me, it's more the plans than anything else.
Yep.
And, and like I said, you do inspection reports, the.
Especially the Asbills, hopefully they were built as a.
Absolutely critical.
Well, the building department should have Asbills, because when the planning board approves a subdivision plan, it doesn't approve necessarily the homes, it approves the lots. So each, each lot, each lot has to file for foundation and building permits through the building department.
I don't think the building department does have them.
They should, EPW. EPW, okay.
EPW.
If they can find them.
Yes. Yes. But again, we may, my office may not have them to begin with, because they may go to the EPW. And like you said, if their record keeping hasn't been the best, there's not really much we can do about that, so.
Anyway.
Interesting.
Okay, see, new planning board, town, planning webpages.
Yes, so I did wanna, we're going live in two days, right, Tamika? So that's the other thing that I've been, I've been working diligently on with Tamika's help. She's been wonderful and very patient, I'm surprised she hasn't smacked me by now, but she's.
You have my permission.
She's been very helpful, so when we go live on Thursday, you will see that the planning board page is gonna be very basic, it's gonna have the membership, and it's gonna have meeting minutes and agendas. A lot of other things have been moved over to the planning department page, like for instance, external links to like CMRPC and DHCD and things like that, I've added some to that. So check it out on, on Thursday when we go live, I've really put a lot of effort to make sure that the, the the webpage looks complete when it goes live on Thursday. It has my contact information, it has all, it, I basically recreated every single form from our subdivision rules and regs. I retyped each individual one with town, with, with the town seal on the top. So all of our form A, B, C, all the way through whatever we have, all the way through O, has been re. has been recreated and is under planning board forms on the webpage. Tamika and I have, have streamlined the applications for special permit and site plan approval and subdivisions to be, uh, much more concise and much more user-friendly. I retyped the fee schedule, so that's up there, so everyone knows what the fees are for the board. So, um, a lot of work's gone into it, um, I think it's gonna look good. And, um, we want it, the goal is to be user-friendly and have as much information out there as possible. So when you look at it, if you, I even put the draft master plan, um, on there, that's there. Um, the town center study and survey that had happened, uh, things like that. So when we go live on Thursday, check it out, if there's anything that you think should be added. Oh, I wrote up a nice, um, a nice, um, planning board responsibilities and summarized the responsibilities of the planning board. And myself, on my page, a paragraph.
Where's this located?
It's gonna be the town website, a new town website on Thursday.
Where's that?
The internet.
The internet.
You mean to tell me I gotta get it?
Yeah.
Townofrutland.org.
So Dick, just go back, plug in your Commodore sixty-four or your Texas instrument. Just kidding, I actually used to have a Commodore sixty-four back in the eighties, so, no, just kidding.
Maybe there's a paper version.
So, so no, so, um.
When the last item comes up on the, uh, on the thing.
So no, obviously I'm joking, but, uh, but no, so if this, so, so Dick, Norm, um, Keith, go on, check it out. If there's anything that you think should be added, just let me know.
Yep.
And we can put it on there. Uh, adding stuff to the website is very user-friendly now. It's much quicker than it used to be.
Websites, um, like content management systems, I don't know if that's how they call it, but, yeah, you can change anything. And the whole layout can move.
Yep.
You know, they make.
One thing that even I had to catch up on being kind of in between the younger generation and the older generation is like, the widgets and the modules, I'm like, widget?
Yeah, which are features, essentially, yeah.
That was a town center thing, and that's part of the easement through the open space.
Once you get the hang of it, it's very easy, it's almost like doing PowerPoint, like you said, where you have different, you have the different, uh, windows, you have the, it's like, almost like a text box, you can go in and you can change within that text box. They call it something different, but it's like a text box.
Cool. And it's actually, it's gonna be rutlandma.gov, but if you type in the old website, it'll redirect you to the new website.
So, good things happen. All right, so that's all I have, Norm.
This is what I had asked about, um, putting up your subdivisions back on again, so. Once again, on your agenda, I had asked, the next time add back on the list, Bryce Lemon, Bretton Hill Top and Bear Hill. So to, to keep reminding us.
Yeah, yeah.
Because when I took a hike out through there, I had asked, uh, and, and you sent it to Clea and I, and he sent it back. And, um, Bretton Hill, while, uh, working on the lots, you were supposed to provide a link to the rail trail. And what status do they expect of this product?
Yes, he did provide answers.
Yes, he did, and the rail trail connection is at the back of Phase Two Quail Run. When we do Phase Two, hopefully it'll be done by next spring, we intend to make the connection then. I said, good, because.
It's in writing.
Yeah.
Bear Hill Two, Phase Two, um, I took a, you know, I took a ride through all these places and when is the top coat pavement scheduled to be installed along with the Cape Cod burn? Nothing is scheduled as of yet, we only have one more foundation to put in. Be complete, finished with that site, my hope that'll be Arrowhead will be on the town warrant for acceptance next fall, town meeting.
Yeah, because at this point, they're probably not gonna do any paving until spring.
That is correct, yeah.
But they, they might be able to get it on for the May.
It's possible, it all depends, you know, our goals.
I don't, I don't think Clea wants to do a lot of delays on this anymore.
No, I think he wants.
What happened to Bear Hill?
Yeah, I think he wants to get it cleared up.
I'd be surprised if he doesn't, uh, ask for, uh, Phase Three of Bryce Lemon.
Yeah, yeah. And Bryce Lemon, uh, have the drainage, I put, I said pits and trenches and I'm probably sure to put down pond or the pond.
That sounds dangerous, pits and trenches.
Well, when they're digging, you know, you know, et cetera, been clean for the winter. And, and the short answer is yes, the Concom DCR are here mostly, most weeks checking on things. I'm not understanding what meant by trench and pit and that was detention pond is what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Has the detention pond in Phase One been cleaned this year? No, but it's so full of silt, it's like quicksand, in our opinion, to wait until it freezes this winter to clean it out and to build it to completion this spring and summer. And, um, and then I asked about the trail ramp, if they could fix it, make it ADA compliant when they clean out that pond.
They can.
And I, I'm gonna have to go to DCR and have a discussion with them to, to allow it. Have you moved any easement for the open space to place the trail on top and not on the side of, I put molten pond and I meant stair pond. And, and, uh, well, yeah. So he said, he thought he changed it some time ago, but I don't know, I have not seen it on any kind of a map or, you know, something like that. And that's why I printed out that to have an idea. Because originally it was, he had, he had it right along the easement, right along the edge. You can't go in there and bulldoze or do any work along there to make a trail. You know, it's too close to the water, and that's why I set up on the top, up on the top. And someday, um, we'll get the, either TA or select board to get an easement from, um, hopefully go see John Cryer, I think his name is, owns that piece of property. And see if we can get an easement across his. And that would connect Putnam Park all the way over to the rail trail. And that's one of the things that the town center thing we, uh, had discussed way back and thought it would be a good idea.
Okay.
And that's it, that's my, my jaunt that day.
So, so good news, so he's, he's used to be like, he's on top of things.
Yeah.
Yeah, for the most part, it's one of these things where. Sometimes he has to get, be pushed a little bit.
We're, we're still working, we're still working on the, um, the different documents for the signature for Hilltop Estates. We're still working on that with town council, so, um, they're working with George to get those documents finalized.
So, uh, future zoning bylaw amendments?
Yep, so we have, it's the, the ones we discussed, the ones that weren't able to go forward before that are going forward, hopefully in February, with what was discussed tonight. Couple other things that, um, I'm gonna prepare for May. Fairly basic things, but in May, um, the town clerk, when she was updating the zoning bylaws, found some Scrivener's errors. And we whittled it down to about three or four. And so that's gonna be a housekeeping item in May to clean the zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaws up. And also, I want to, I'm gonna be creating a use table and a dimensional regulation table for the zoning bylaws to make it easier for people to reference. Because I know when I was preparing for my interview and I went through the zoning bylaws, it's very difficult to say, okay, what's the minimum lot size? Okay, you have to read through paragraphs of text to find out what the minimum lot size is for a district. So to have those two things in a table form in a spreadsheet, so someone could say, okay, what's the use? Here's the district, is it allowed, yes, no, special permit, an easy reference for people. Yes, oh yeah.
Great.
Yep, so that's.
That will help a whole bunch, I still think this whole thing should be rethought of.
Yes, I know, and, and, you know, we're, we're putting a lipstick on, lipstick on a, on a pig, so to speak. But at least it'll make, it'll make it more user-friendly and it'll make it quicker for people to reference it. Because that, most of the time when I get phone calls, that's what people look for. Wha- what zoning district am I in, what can I do with my property? Here, go to this section, there's your spreadsheet, there's, there's your use, there's your zoning district, and it's very easy to look up.
And I think that's it.
Yes, excellent.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
Nope.
I had a couple of comments, and I'm not sure if I can just bring up things that we already went over. I know at the end of the master plan, it says about creating a group that's supposed to oversee those, the last two pages.
Oh, creating, creating an implementation committee?
Yeah, I don't know what your thoughts are on that and if it's, that's gonna be something that can happen, or if that's a down the road.
Or is that the select board?
I think that's the select board.
Yeah, it's a select board decision, I mean, some towns do have them.
Yep.
A lot of towns don't, but some towns do have an implementation committee now. I know the town already has the zoning bylaw subcommittee of the planning board that looks at the zoning bylaws and there's also another subcommittee that looks at the general bylaws, but they're going after, once the general bylaws are passed in February, they're gonna dissolve and a new one's gonna be created, is that correct?
Hopefully, and actually, the new one will be created before the existing expires.
Wow.
Hopefully.
So, I mean.
The select, they're talking about it, they've been talking about it, they just haven't done anything.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's gonna be, if, is it gonna be desired to have another subcommittee on master plan implementation? Or would it be a combination of those two boards coming together to do that?
That can do that work.
Because a lot of the implementation is looking at our general and zoning bylaws and, and adding to them and changing them to, um, accomplish certain things, so a lot of it is regulations and bylaws, so.
Yeah, you wonder if there's a bottleneck for some of those things or if, if we can easily, I'd say we have to do it, everything on the list or whatever, but I know when sometimes, like the land thing, you know, it's like if every, you know, obviously it's different boards' opinions, but, you know, if, if we never get to anything, I think is the way you mentioned a couple of weeks, months ago, is if you write that whole document, we don't do anything with it.
Well, that's, that's part of the planner's job too.
Yeah.
Is to look, is to look at economic development and land use and say, okay, what, what are, what are the, some of the things we need to accomplish, exactly. So that's, that's part of my job is to, is to make sure that we're, we're looking at the master plan and we're, we're accomplishing the goals. So that's gonna be part of my job is to bring these things to the board's attention and, um, and discuss them and obviously the bylaws subcommittee.
And also, we also have the economic development committee.
Yep, that's, that's just been formed and I need to reach out and connect with them, so, um, so yeah, so, um.
That section.
Yeah, so I don't know if the, if the town's gonna decide to put together a special implementation committee or have those three boards kind of, you know, take care of various aspects, so.
Just, just to let you know, hopefully that sometime in, all depends money-wise. The Board of Assessors came out with a new map. DCR already sent a layer in showing where their property is. And she just got word it's gonna cost between fifteen to eighteen hundred dollars per layer to be added to the map. And the map, we were hoping will have the APRs, sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B on it. And, and any other, um, like mass wildlife or any other thing. So we'll have a map that will show everything on there that is significant to different people in this community. And I don't ever want to hear where, you know, central masses, oh, look at all this land we got over here to develop and it's all DCR watershed. So, don't want to go through that again, so.
One more thing, um, and not to take everyone's time up too much. You might like this one, I was in Florida, I met someone who lives in a small town on Rhode Island, it was a farm town, Little.
Little Compton?
Compton?
Yeah, that's down in South County.
So they're, um, yeah, Southern Rhode Island. And so, we were talking about land and stuff like that, and he mentioned that his town, and not saying that we have to do this, but it was interesting. His town developed a bylaw that says any, I guess it was a farm town, so any farms that are gonna get sold that aren't gonna stay farm or field, ten percent would have to go to a fund for the town to use to buy open space down the road, say, so it's like free cash. But it was really interesting, because I mean, if, uh, I don't know, I wouldn't say we have that much land left to accumulate money like that, but it was a, you know, when everyone goes, we, we don't have enough money for this, we don't have enough like that.
Well.
Interesting way to accomplish a goal like that, even though it, you know.
We, we should have a fund like that.
We also.
However, however you fund it, there should be that fund in.
You know, for a building permit, it should cost nine thousand dollars. Bulk of that will go help build a new school.
Okay, I see what you mean.
Which we're gonna need pretty soon.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, so, interesting.
So I think, you know, there's, there's a lot, I mean, on the goal and objectives. As a matter of fact, Leah still got her print over there on that wall. You know, they came up with CPA, is it?
Yeah.
They talked about it, but nothing got done. And to me, for crying out loud, what a kick in the butt.
If you, if you look at towns that have had, adopted the CPA several years ago and the amount of funding that they have now, and a lot of people say, oh, it's a, it's, it's additional tax, so they say, no, we don't wanna pay an additional tax. But even, even if you say it's one percent, within a few years, you're talking tens of thousands of dollars to do historic preservation, open space purchases, things like that, so, yeah.
And to me, that's one of the biggest things that, where are all these goals and objectives?
CPA is a very hot-button topic in a lot of towns.
Yeah, yeah. And the surrounding towns, and you're right, they talk about it and how well they are doing with it.
I wish Rutland was that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion?
We're adjourned.